Ball rolling, welcome everyone. Oh, thank you. Welcome all to the Economic and Community Development Committee, meeting of the common council. And also joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'll just go do a roll call on our end. I'll just name out the names that are in front of us tonight. And with us is Ms. Smith, Mr. Livingston, Mr. Huberman, Ms. Young, and myself, the Chair John Kites.
And, oh, I'm sorry, John.
No, I was, I was, go right ahead, please.
Okay, and I'll, I'll call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting portion to together. And Steve, I'll ask you to do a roll call if you would.
Mr. Ferguson?
Present.
Mr. Rowena? I saw him. Okay, Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Sorry, people's faces are moving around quicker than I can read them off. Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Langallis?
Here.
Ms. Jordan Byron?
Present.
And Mr. Scholman?
Here.
I think I got everybody.
Rowena here.
Yep. I got you before.
You were muted.
I know.
Oh, and I'm sorry, on my end, Mr. Meek has joined us as well, the ECD Commission Committee.
Right, if you want, I can start us off if you'd like.
Sure, I believe we have public participation on the agenda. So I don't know, Sabrina, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
Brian's the host for this meeting, but we do have John Molling that has his hand raised to speak.
Just before you do that, I just wanted to introduce Galen Wells, the final member of the commission.
John, you should be able to unmute yourself and be able to speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Thank you. I'm John Molling. I live on Seabreeze Place in South Newark. It occurs to me that maybe the reason that zoning regulations weren't reformed for 30 years was that it was going to be kind of tough to implement them. I've been following the process, and now I know what a charrette is. So I've learned a lot, and still the knocking down yesterday of Norwalk's second lot of oldest house shows how tough it is to organize and implement in a city like Newark. I live close by several neighbors and friends whose places start with the numbers in the half-page public notice in the hour. Will the new regs change now how they live and work? I mean, if it was okay to build a henhouse in your backyard last week, is it likely to be okay to build one next week? I, that part of the implementation isn't clear to me. I believe the new regs make the city better overall, and implementing them may in fact be tough, especially after 30 years. It can be done fairly and humanely. No one should be retroactively limited or deprived. Where I live around Woodward and Meadow and Merritt, we are a neighborhood, and that matters. Thanks for listening.
Do we have anyone else signed up to speak?
If you'd like to speak, can you please use the raise your hand function? If not, we'll just have you marked as you're here for listening only. Nobody's raising their hand, so I think we're all good.
Great, thanks, Sabrina. Okay, so we'll close public participation and move on to item for the review and discussion of the industrial zones waterfront study. And Steve, do you want to take it from here?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm assuming you guys can all see that?
We can.
So, so it's going to be a tag team tonight between Michelle Andruski, who's the senior planner, myself. So we're going to kind of break it up into a couple of different segments. So, you know, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to just give you kind of an overview of the waterfront study that was done and completed a little while ago, with the idea being that we would like to amend the Plan of Conservation and Development to refer to the plan for the guidance going forward for this specific geography. So, just to give you a little bit of what we're going to talk about tonight, just a quick overview of what we did for engagement, the kind of the backbone and the framework of the plan. Spent a little more time on the recommendations for the different areas that were studied, and then just quickly recap what the next steps are, as I kind of alluded to. The idea being that we'll have to come back to the ECD Committee and then full council for approval of an amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development to incorporate this plan into that document. One other item to note, something that's a little bit of difference between what we did with this plan versus what we did with, say, the industrial zone study is we didn't really develop full zoning regulations with this plan. We kind of left things a little more open-ended with the idea with that the broader zoning rewrite would incorporate these changes into that and get discussed at a later date. So the kind of the, you know, the big purpose, the vision for the area is to kind of look at the industrial zoning as a whole. And we've, this area in particular, we focused on the waterfront. We had initially thought we could do the waterfront portion of the study along with the overall industrial zone study, but it just, there were so many kind of intricacies with the waterfront that came up that we really wanted to spend more time and really dig into things more. So we kind of broke that as kind of a compendium study. So that's what this study does, where the industrial zones is kind of a complete on the books books action at this point, and this is like the next phase. And Michelle's going to walk you through timeline and some of the background information before I jump into the recommendations.
All right. So this is the timeline. The plan took about a year. There was six steering committee meetings, two public meetings. Then we also had two focus group meetings which were presented to ENNA and the Norwalk Housing Authorities residents. So before I go deeper, the study area on how this was defined, it was the first public street in from the waterline. And then included in this map is also influence areas and parks, which were not included for land use or recommendate, recommended for land use change, but was just here for context. So for engagement, we had two public meetings that had over 200 people, two rounds of interactive mapping, and then two physical boards that were at City Hall, various libraries, and senior centers. And then we spoke to about 60 stakeholders. So basically, what we heard from our outreach boiled down to three major interests from the public, which included beautification, ecology, and public access included in the options. We're here on this graph that they could choose from. And then through this process, we also heard from the public the need to address contamination, water quality, flood resilience issues, improve public access, recreation, and hospitality networking. We also heard areas of debate, contention, and anxiety. So when looking at the existing uses and then also the thought of implementing new uses or transitioning uses, there was three major areas that were a point of contention, which included the inner harbor heavy industry, the Water Street Marine Commercial, the Walk Bridge staging parcels. And there's two ways that people are looking at this. The local economy, what were these areas and land uses bringing in terms of jobs and tax base? Other people were looking at the needs of Norwalk residents versus regional needs that can negatively impact local experience. And then there is also contention between waterfront growth, what people envisioned the waterfront to look like. People thought tourism, recreation, hospitality, marine commercial uses, focusing more industrial businesses and supporting those, or implementing more residential uses around the harbor. And then this last note for dredging, dredging is important for navigating the harbor for depth, but also dredging can have an environmental impact of increasing turbidity, which can impact the oystering industry. So the existing character areas, there were selected 19, which kind of shows you how varied the land uses are around the harbor. I guess we can go next slide. So to create the character areas were based on four primary identification methods. This included natural and built environment, flood risk in impervious areas, public ownership and water access. And we also looked at the land using, land use and zoning. So topographic character, this is important to know around the East Ave area and the north area of the study area that changed more greatly with elevation and what this contributes to, what kind of land uses can be there. And then we also considered FEMA CAM zone and local zoning within the types of land uses in character areas that were envisioned to the process. And then lastly, for the water use analysis, we really broke down all the types of water-dependent uses, which included commercial, industrial, seafood, boat and yacht clubs, rowing clubs, and those sorts.
So for the, the next, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Is it me or you?
No, no, I'm sorry. It was you. I cut you off a little.
Okay. And then the public access networks is important to include. These three areas were highlighted from the Harbor Loop Plan that could use more connectivity in the plan also highlighted. Perhaps more point access to the water might be a little easier. And then we also considered planned capital projects. So keeping in mind all the sorts of moving parts within the city that are happening.
Okay. So that all kind of develops the framework on, you know, where do we go from here? And the, the one slide Michelle showed you with all those different character areas, they, that was broken down further into some very specific areas with completely varied recommendations on what the land use should be. And I'm going to kind of go starting off Crescent Street where ONG is, as well as where Divine is and King Industries, and then work around the harbor and end up back at Water Street, because that was probably the area where we had most of the discussion. You might remember, I know we looked at it quickly, the other map had other areas highlighted on there. But for the most part, there were changes that were proposed for those, just kind of mention them in context of what's going on in the broader area. So kind of zooming in on the western side of the north portion of the harbor, there is some kind of different things going on there. So along the harbor itself, you've got this kind of dark blue color. That's pretty heavy industrial uses. So here you have King Industries and Divine and some contractor yards and things going up. So kind of the recommendation is what's going on on the other side of the tracks? Because as you start to move inland, then you're starting to get into areas that are either predominantly residential, or they're starting to get up towards Wall Street where you have a little bit of more of a mixed use. So how do you transition from that heavy industrial to something that's can still add to commercial growth, but at the same time is not conflicting or detrimental to what's happening inland? So the study, you know, it kind of broke it down into two different recommendations in kind of citing two different ways you could go in this area. It says you could, you could do more of a mixed-use environment, which is more consistent with what's going on in the Wall Street area. Or you can also leave it as a lighter industrial use. In either one, the, you know, the committee as well as the consultant team felt were appropriate uses. So how this could shake out at the end of the day is it's really how the zoning map gets designated in the final product. So you could, you could change it in any, any of these two ways, and there could be variations between the different streets or different areas you're looking at. Moving to the other side of the harbor, just to point out some features to orientate, orientate folks, this is Mill Hill. Here is head of the harbor south. So we're talking about these properties here. That's the old asphalt plant, your Smith Street through here. So this area, similar recommendations came down, and we actually added a new one based on public input. So the, the first two recommendations were you could, A, you could do something similar to what's going on at head of the harbor south and just carry that down along the water. You could also do something that was more water-dependent. Obviously, an asphalt plant in that location is not something that's beneficial for the city over the long term. But maybe there's some marine commercial type uses that are water-dependent that that would be appropriate. But we also got another idea, which was to what if this became a park? And, and the kind of consultant ran with that a little bit and said, well, maybe it could be a sponge park with the idea being that it could flood over time and be something that if the water level rises, you know, it's not accessible, but once the water recedes, it's back to something that's gives the, the public access in another means to get access to the water. So whatever direction the city decided to go, it, either one of those would be acceptable. Obviously, if you go the park route, that, you know, leads to the city potentially having to purchase that property and seek funding to do so. As you move south, here's I-95 kind of bisecting the, the river here. And so there underneath this area, it's kind of a unique little forgotten piece of the city where you have a couple of different marinas and boat clubs through here. So the consultant, again, you know, working with the committee, came up with a couple of different options where you could, and again, all of these would be, you know, acceptable and could work, whether it's keeping it a marine commercial type use, whether it's more of a mixed-use type scenario where you have commercial and residential and public access. Or you could leave it in an industrial fashion. All these would be acceptable to and be consistent with the plan. It's just a matter of which direction the city chose to go on any of those properties. Lastly, before we get into the Water Street area specifically, this property over here, which is just to the southeast of the Walk Bridge, is one that I believe is coming back to the city, you know, post Walk Bridge. And the consultant again had three different scenarios, and I'll go through those, you know. I'm sure there's probably a very strong desire for this to be a public access point where it could be a green space. It could be a more of a mixed-use environment. And the consultant also put in another option where they left it open just for consideration, not necessarily as the recommendation by any stretch, and they have notes on the bottom to reflect that. What would happen if the city needed that for some other purpose for down the road? So the idea is it just, the, the plan is to keep options open. It's not the zoning, it's just a potential use on that property. So when the final zoning does come forward, the city can decide which they feel is the best option for that property. Obviously, it's a highly visible property, it's something that could be highly sought after once the, the bridge work is done. The area that received probably the most conversation was Water Street itself. Specifically, obviously, we focused on the area between the bridge and then transitioning south until you get to the, the neighborhood residential areas. Some common themes that came up, and it was really trying to strike a balance between a lot of competing interests and a lot of demand for property. So there was a strong desire to retain and protect water-dependent uses and water-dependent businesses. But there's also a desire for the Water Street facing piece of it not to look like it does now. A very, another strong component of that was to make sure there is public access to these properties whenever feasible. Also to make sure that the, there are view sheds to the water, because right now, in many cases, that's not, not, not possible. And also very important is water quality and flood resilient, because this area, obviously, everyone knows it floods. Flooding is probably going to get worse in the future. And you have to think about that area, if you've ever really looked at it. There's probably over 90% impervious surface, if not 100% impervious surface on these properties. So any drop of water that hits those properties immediately washes right into the Long Island Sound. So there's no attenuation, there's no water quality treatment. So that's something that the plan tried to achieve as well. Just quickly, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, this slide just shows the existing zoning for those properties. And I'm going to go through a little more detail what we're thinking for initial recommendations on that property. But this is, again, just what's allowed there today. And this came up quite a bit during our conversations. You can do residential on those properties now. People are choosing not to do so because of the restrictions in place, but there are things like residential that are allowed there. And we're fully cognizant of the desire to maintain water-dependent uses whenever possible and maintain job growth. But I think there's a better mix of land use that could kind of hit at a lot of the things that, that people are seeking. So the, the plan itself has several recommendations on how you achieve what everybody wants. So the idea being you have these properties that stretch from Water Street, which is kind of the top of the slide, to the actual Norwalk River itself. And the front side is something that could be a, you know, a much more pleasing mixed-use concept with this ground floor, could be some kind of commercial. But the key thing is that that ground floor is going to be something that can be floodable. So we understand that water is going to come in and the water is going to go out. So obviously, you're not going to put something down there that's going to get damaged, or you're worried about health and safety. You can do potentially residential up above if you chose to do so, but the back half would have to maintain some water dependency. And I'm going to go through a little bit later on some more specifics on the, the measurements. Again, here's another example of how this could be done. The regulations proposed would require that you have to maintain access points through here. And there's, what they did, there was a number of 26 that came up for the minimum access width. And that's really based on what you're going to need to get boats in and out of there. That's one of the key drivers. But what that also accomplishes, it provides the ability at some point in time to allow public access through there and also provide view shed corridors through that area. So the water is not completely blocked off from the street. This is kind of a cross-section showing existing conditions on Day Street. This is the Tom Rich Building on Water Street, and this is what is currently going on on the other side of the street. But this is what it could look like going forward in terms of cross-section, where underneath the building, you could have either parking of vehicles, you could have boat storage. The backside is a different use, but at the front of the street, it's something that looks completely different. And the, the recommendation is to keep those buildings lower, not allow them to go up to the height you would get on the other side of the street. So that way, you're not blocking off the views from the harbor entirely. A little more specifics on, on our initial thinking on the zoning itself. The recommendation is that for the first 250 feet of where these properties front Water Street going back to the harbor, and that's what this yellow highlight shows, that's where you can do those mixed-use properties. Something very interesting to point out, going from south to north, is that the properties are much deeper on the southern portion than they are on the northern portion. So the southern portion, the 250-foot line makes up a much smaller amount of the property versus a northern part where it almost takes up the entire piece of the property. So I mentioned the 26-foot wide width. You would need to have a property that goes fully front to back to take advantage of some of the loosening of the regulations that we're proposing. We're proposing to potentially allow some increased density within this, this yellow area here, provided that they give the city back certain things. So we want to make sure that there is water-dependent uses on the back, that there's public access, that there's improved water quality and resiliency on these properties through the rear of this. And that these, whatever happens in the future, that the buildings are built to a higher standard of flood protection and resilience measures. So that's kind of like the give and the take. We'll, we'll give you something, but we want something in return. So this is just kind of a conceptual look at what the Water Street area could look like. Obviously, it's more of a complete street concept where the other side of the street has, you know, this would be Water Street and the other side, and this is what the Water Street side could look like. Here's another view showing that the, the, the potential ground floor space could be commercial or could be elevated. There's different ways to go about flood-proofing these properties. With the idea being, we're not going to put people in harm's way on these upper floors. They're going to have the ability to safely exit those properties if and when there was, you know, a kind of a concern about the rising waters. Whereas the backside, whatever possible, we'd love to have as much public access as possible. At the same time, with vegetative buffers and, you know, things like that to improve water quality. That's a big thing that's missing now. So this is just an example of a an, an area where you could do that. Obviously, certain water-dependent uses, that's not going to be possible to have public access down there. If you have a a facility that's doing heavy boat repair or bulkhead repair, and they have cranes moving in and out, it might not be possible to have water access on the whole site or on the site in general. If there's cranes moving in and out, that could pose safety concerns. But that would have to be something that when the application came forward with the commission, that would have to get justified and you know, gone through with the commission, just to make sure we're all on the same page on what is occurring on the properties. And that was hopefully fairly quick. Obviously, you have my contact information. I have Michelle's on there as well. You can reach out to either of us at any time. I've tried to do that as quickly as possible to leave ample time for questions, because we do have a lot of folks on the meeting.
Mr. Scholman, do you, would you like to start it off, or would you pass it on to the ECD?
Why don't you have the council members go first?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Livingston, I see your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Steve, what is the process here? What are next steps? And what should we expect to see?
So the, the, the next step is a short-term step, which is the actual amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development. So that will come back to ECD, and then full council has to vote on that as well. That might, I haven't discussed this with anybody in terms of where it would fall on your agenda. Hopefully, no later than your January meeting. And at that point, it's just the adoption of the plan into the POCD, not the, the zoning piece is going to be a second phase, which we wrap into the broader zoning rewrite.
I mean, I'm sorry, just to be clear, so the, when you say the plan, you, you said you're going to come back with zoning recommendations, specific recommendations. I guess I'm not following exactly what the second step is.
So, so the first step is just, there's, it's either one sentence or two sentence amendment to the Plan of Conservation and Development, which basically just incorporates the waterfront plan into the POCD. And that's an action that requires council approval as well as Planning and Zoning Commission. So that'll be short-term, like I said, either hopefully December or January, when your schedule permits. The zoning.
Yeah, that's the council piece, right? You're saying?
Correct. And the, the broader zoning rewrite will incorporate recommendations related to the waterfront. What we're going to do with the draft zoning map itself, where there were areas where there were two or three viable options for properties, we will have a recommendation there and just let that come out of the public process.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, I have a question. You, you brought up a good point. Well, Water Street is, is obviously a big part of this conversation. And this, there are some concerns I have with having such different uses on the same parcel. I guess one question would be, would they be able to subdivide the parcel and then with, with an easement for separate uses, seeing that the 250 square feet on the front? And then the rear being obviously the water-dependent uses?
The, the, the recommendation as it stands now is that they wouldn't be able to subdivide if they wanted to get the, the benefits of the mixed use on Water Street, with the idea being that if, and I think it goes to maybe where your, your question was going, that if, like right now, if you had just a rear piece of property and that we don't have the ability to necessarily require they do something that's more beneficial to the public on, on one of those properties, if they had a, like a truly water-dependent use, like if it was a marina. But if they want to get some more benefit out of the property, I think we have more leverage that way to require other things.
Because I know we've had these conversations offline about the, the, the upper part of Water Street, the, the possibilities and the good things that could happen in that area. I, I mean, are there, are there any developers out there that you, you would see taking this, taking on this? If there were to be changes and interest in developing Water Street? If there were to be changes and interest in developing, uh, Water Street?
Sure. So i- i- it's important to keep in mind too, water dependent use doesn't necessarily mean industrial use on some of those properties that very well might be the best approach. But the, I can pull the map back up if you like, but on those properties on the northern end, they're not very deep. Some of them are just over 250 feet, 300 feet. So it's, and a lot of those don't have those kind of uses on it now. So it might be more beneficial for them to have a water dependent use. That was something that was more, excuse me, like a public benefit type of water dependent use versus something that was like a heavier marine water.
Thank you. Any other questions from the ECD committee?
Mr. Meek has his hand up, I see.
Yeah, hey, John.
Hey, Mr. Meek, go ahead, please.
Um, so I, I guess I was encouraged looking at the, uh, draft plan uh, with the options for more marina space and it's kind of timely for me. I was looking around for a, a new boat slip. And one of the commercial marinas here, our largest one has a, uh, has a waiting list over almost 300 on the waiting list. So like the, this is a great opportunity, I think, for, for Norwalk to, as a growing city to grow our, our, um, you know, our, our slips, our boat slips for residents. So, um, thanks. And I, I really hope you do choose, um, those options that maximize that. That was it, John.
Thank you. Anybody else? I see now, Mr. Schuman, you're up.
Okay, I, I have my hand raised, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Hugman, please.
Thanks. Um, I, I have a couple of questions. This concerns the upper part of the river and the, the, um, Commerce Street and, uh, Smith Street areas, uh, along there. I, I'm curious as to why, what the, what the reasoning is for leaving that all heavy industrial, how that came out in the, in the study on the water side of the river and then the, along Commerce Street again, that, you know, the, I know that you're looking at the mixed use idea, all of that. Then I'm curious also about the, uh, will be the Smith Street side where we're looking at potential open space and how this process works from here. You're, we're going to move this study to, you know, two lines into the P O C D that says we're going to adopt this study based on when, which options are you choosing and at what point are those chosen to be the options that will go with the study? And how is that process working? So those are two questions buried in there.
Sure. And if I don't answer one of them as I start rambling on, please.
I'll, I'll jump into it.
Sure. So, um, Michelle had mentioned as, when she was talking about the outreach piece, we actually talked to pretty much every business and property owner that has property that butts the water, which is, she mentioned over 60 interviews, we talked to everybody. Um, I, I, the only one I, and I should clarify that I did not, we did not talk to the gentleman that has the ICE business up in that area, but that we figured was not as relevant to the study. But we, we had actually had a meeting where we talked to ownership of King Industries, O N G and Divine. We met with them for over an hour at our office where we just talked to them about, here's what we're, some, some of the things we're thinking. When, when we learn more about their business, um, where, what they think is going to happen going forward and what they want to see with their properties. And they were pretty much, um, and I don't want to speak for anybody because obviously, you know, just kind of paraphrasing, but you know, King Industries for one, uh, that indicated to us they have zero plans to go anywhere, um, very satisfied with their location. Um, they can't, based on the nature of their business and what's on the property, they can't allow waterfront access. So I know that was a big, you know, trying to complete the Harbor Loop Trail and stuff was something that we broached with them. It just wasn't something that was feasible. Uh, Divine had indicated to us that the, their preference was to remain industrial one. Uh, you know, and a lot of this was also based on looking at employment numbers for those businesses, what those businesses service and what, how they fit into the broader culture of the city going forward. Um, so it, also it's important to note Divine is also truly a water dependent use where they rely on barge shipments for materials for their business, whether it's aggregate or sand or whatever. So they, they need that to process their business. So that, that was some of the thinking there. Um, on the other side where the O N G site is, I think that there are different options for what they would like to see there going forward. Right now, they, they could proceed with more of a mixed use concept similar to what was done at Head of the Harbor South. So that, that's an option there. Um, and as it relates to the plan itself, so the, the plan will, the idea is the plan will have those three options in the plan. It's not going to recommend one specific thing for those areas. It'll, it's basically saying, in our opinion, in the opinion of the committee that put this together, all these are viable, viable options. And I think it gives the city flexibility. So say for that, um, O N G site, say the city says, you know what, it'd be really great to have a park through there. It would be just a great asset for the city. If we have that as part of the plan, that gives us leverage and the ability to seek, um, grant funding because we've, we've identified that as a need in an area where we potentially like to see a public access and green space. But at the same time, if we decide that the zoning for there is appropriate for more of a mixed use, the plan backs that up as well. So it gives the, the city options on which direction they feel is most important.
But that, my understanding is though you're going to then, you're, we're about to adopt new zoning regulations that will reflect a specific use or will reflect all, all three options. How does that work?
So the final zoning will have, the final zoning map will have a zoning designation for every parcel in the city. So during that process, which, um, you know, probably is going to be a four month process, we'll hash those conversations out and then pick, pick a, a zone for those properties in question. It, but if, but if in the future that, that, um, O N G site would become available and the city decided it was something they wanted to purchase, there's leverage and backup there for us to make the, uh, make, make a case for funding to get, get that property.
Well, thi- this brings me to another question that we had a lot of discussion about with the industrial zone study, not just the waterfront, but the full industrial zone study about different parcels and that we would be, you know, making some shifts in the zoning regulations. And that those industries that were currently there would be grandfathered in if it was industrial one. You're not throwing a company out in that moment, but when that, the use of that property would change or that property would be sold, it would move to the new zoning. Was that not considered with some of these heavy industrial, especially up towards the, the, uh, top end of the river?
Yeah, that, that was discussed at length, um, between, A, the consultant team staff and the property owners, but as well as the committee members as well. They, so each one of these kind of subsections or smaller areas, they looked at and, you know, weighed the pros and cons of the designations for any one of those properties. And so that, that's where the recommendations came down.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm troubled because we talk about wanting access to the river. We talk about the fact that we have one of the largest coastlines in Connecticut in, in Norwalk. When we look at the river, we look at the harbor, we look at, at, at how we, how we sit and how we're situated. And that we're not moving in a direction towards reclamation of, of that waterfront, especially with the way industry is changing, way we're becoming much more small business oriented. And the, the opportunities for trails and walkways along that river and that we would eventually set that up through this right now. But leaving that as heavy industrial sort of cuts us off from the ability to do that without then jumping through all of these zoning hoops again at some point. So that's, well, that's my piece.
Yeah, I, I understand your point. I, and I think though, from my perspective, if and when, you know, it, it's, you know, obviously it's private property and they have the right to continue their use. No matter what we zoned, they have the right to continue that use in perpetuity. If and when they decided they wanted to move on from that property, um, i- it, changing the zoning on that wouldn't be a big, I, in my opinion, that's not kind of a big lift to do that kind of exercise.
Okay. All right. So I guess we're going to, oh, Ms. Ms. Smith, please.
Um, yeah, um, thanks, John. Um, yeah, I'd just like to, um, to add to that, um, you know, because we are looking at the Harbor Loop Trail and that's an area, you know, for the state's, uh, heavy industrial, there's nothing we can do about the Harbor Loop Trail. But, you know, I, I, is there something we can consider in some way? I mean, you know, it's like for pedestrians walking along Commerce Street, it's just dangerous. You know, it's just downright dangerous. So is there something that we can do in the zoning that can require some safety measurements? Um, you know, in that area, if it's, if we, we kind of have no choice but to leave it heavy industrial.
Yeah, well, what, if and when the, um, property, if it ever redeveloped, we, we could definitely address it at that point. But I think that is something that, and I haven't talked to Jim Travers, but they're doing, you know, the complete streets plan and looking at different areas, that would be something that they could probably address more appropriately than the zoning could for, for that specific issue.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Livingston, I know we got, uh, we got 10 more minutes.
Yeah, okay. I, I'll be just quick, but just to Steve, just following what you were saying about addressing a zoning change when the property turns over, isn't that too late? I mean, if somebody sells the property, assuming it's not, you know, a different use and all, um, aren't we too late at that point to change the zoning?
No, I, I think i- i- if they, somebody sells the property, there's, there's two scenarios. One, somebody is going to buy the business and keep the business as it is. So it's, it's a moot point.
Right.
Or two, they are going to buy it and they want to do something completely different with the property. And then would have to come back to the city to discuss the options and what they want to do.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Just real quick, yeah, the, but in that, in that scenario, someone wants to do something different, but they want to do something that's heavy industrial. And it's still zoned heavy industrial. I mean, if it, if it, if it, if it changes because the use on the property would change, am I, am I correct in reading that? If, if it was changed to a light industrial or a mixed use property, it's grandfathered right now. If we use Divine Brothers as an example, they, they leave, but it, at that point, someone comes in that wants to still use it as an industrial use they can, but if they want to come in with not a, uh, uh, you know, a pavement company, a cement company, you know, are, does it change at that point? Or is it just simply very virtue of industry that the zoning stays the zone?
Yeah, if I, if I got your question, so I, the, the zoning designation, you know, say it stays I one, so whatever uses are allowed, the I one zone, they're allowed to work, work within. If they, um, if they wanted to change it something outside of the I one, then they would have to go through a process of amending the map, the zoning map or the zoning text. Something different. But they, otherwise they're working within the parameters within the I one zone.
But if we rezone it as mixed use, Divine Brothers leaves, the next person coming in has to be mixed use?
Um, no, that they would, so the, the use, so if you change the use from I one to I two or whatever, okay, uh, whatever it is, that they would be bound by the zone that the property lies in. They would be grandfathered to do exactly what Divine Brothers is doing in perpetuity, regardless of whether Divine sells it to Bob Jones or not.
And that's my, and that's, that's Tom's point, where Mr. Livingston's point, which is if it stays zoned I one, somebody buys it, they continue and I, they continue as I one. We don't, we don't, they buy it and then we change the zoning. It doesn't work that way. And they're not coming in to do the exact same thing that Divine Brothers was doing. So they wouldn't be grandfathered, therefore we would slowly have reclamation of that property. That's the point that I'm, that I'm driving at. If we leave it as industrial one, every purchaser continues down the road of industrial one.
Unless the purchaser doesn't want to do something that's I one.
Right. But my point is, is it's still I one. If it's, if they know coming in, purchasing it, they can't do I one, they're going to have to do the, what they're, what the potential is to do something different that's, that conforms to whatever we have zoned it as. We slowly step down and reclaim that property towards, more towards the direction of what I think people are looking for. That's, that's my point.
Not, not to cut anyone off, I want to give, uh, Plating and Zoning Commission an opportunity to speak. So Mr. Schuman, please, uh, sorry for taking so long.
Oh, that's perfectly all right. We've, we've already heard this presentation. So we've, we've had one shot at it. Um, but I do see that, um, JJ had her hand up.
Thank you. Um, good evening all. Um, I, I want to, um, make a point, um, added on to what, um, David was making, um, and thank you very much for bringing it up, David. So at what point does this trigger the community? That a new company wants to come in and operate under a different, um, um, business plan?
I, I'm not, I'm saying, I'm not sure I understand your question.
So to David's point, if it's a, if it's a, you know, I one and, and it's already grandfathered in and he turns around and sells it to another buyer who presumably wants to use it, you know, under the same guise. But let's say he decides to, you know, tweak it a little bit and add a little bit more industry to it. At what point is, does a community, the surrounding community is aware that, you know, the, you know, the, the, the zoning, the, the zone is not being, is not being enforced, is not, you know, it's supposed to be implemented. At, at what point does it trigger? So this way we know that no other company can operate under that permit, doing something outside of those, you know, that, that line.
So I think that with any approval that the, the, the city applies to, to a piece of property, um, there are typically conditions and standards, you know, the, either A, there are standards in the regulations they have to adhere to, or there are additional conditions that the city applies to an approval. So if they deviate from any of those standards or, and/or they don't, excuse me, sorry, they don't obtain a permit for the changes that they've enacted, then, you know, they would be in violation at that point. Um, but if they wanted to, you know, if they were going about things the right way and seeking, um, permission prior to any changes, then they would have to come back to the city for those, for those changes.
And is all of this transparent before they even start, before they even sign on the dotted line?
You mean, what do you mean by sign on the dotted line?
Like, you know, what, what the stipulations are, like you said, what the guidelines are, what, you know, what the zoning entails and holding them accountable.
So if, if you're saying by sign the dotted line, that means them purchasing the property?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah.
All, all the rules and, and the, so when, when the city grants an approval on an application, that runs with the land and is filed on the land records. So whatever conditions go along with that transfer from ownership to ownership, they don't, it doesn't change with the ownership. The conditions remain regardless. Um, but does that mean that, I mean, most significant app transfers of property usually involves, um, some savvy individuals for the most part who, who are aware of what they're buying and what the conditions are. That may not happen with an average homeowner, for example. They don't know what's going on with deed restrictions or easements and those kinds of things. But if someone's buying a significant piece of commercial property, then nine times out of 10, if not 99 times out of 100, they know what they're buying and what the restrictions are on those properties. Doesn't mean that once they buy it, that they're going to play by the rules. That's a different conversation, but going into it, they, they know what they're getting.
Well, no, actually it's part of the same conversation. So how's that going to be enforced?
Well, I, like, as I said, if somebody violates the rules or they, they go do something contrary to a condition that the city has imposed on the application, then that's a violation and goes through the enforcement process.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Sure.
We have, uh, other questions for Steve.
I have a quick one, Steve, sort of like two questions in one, sort of, what are you most excited about with this study and sort of what concerns you the most about it?
Um, I don't know if I've got any concerns really. I think two things I'm, I think were kind of neat. I, I think the idea of a park where the O N G site, I think is something that could be really cool. I know it's a bigger city question and involves a lot of things, but that's something, you know, to everybody's, I, I, I think we heard it, you know, and not just in this forum, but when we did the initial presentations, people want to get access to the water and I understand sometimes with the uses on the property, that's not going to be feasible. Um, so if you could gain property that could provide a part- provide a park that was right off of your historic downtown, I I think that's something that's, you know, very interesting to try to explore, especially if it was something where you you know, that that property's got a bulkhead, it's kind of concrete walled off, it's, you know, water quality is probably bad there. I I think there might be some contamination issues on the inside, but it doesn't mean that you can't do some water quality improvements and improve the shoreline and make it like a more of a living shoreline. There's there's probably options there. So I think that's interesting. And I think the idea of kind of transforming Water Street is also very exciting to not only from the street side, but also what you can do on the backside to make it more of a, you know, more public friendly.
Uh, other questions for Steve on this? Uh, Steve, I have a question, and that is uh, how, if at all, uh, does this study fit in with the study that the redevelopment agency has done about a portion of the waterfront?
Uh, very tightly. So they kind of started their process a little after we started ours, but as soon as, you know, we knew that was moving forward, we reached out to them. They participated in our meetings and we have participated in their meetings. One of the slides that Michelle went through had kind of the 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 identified some of the weak links in the Harbor Loop Trail. So that that came directly out of their study.
Uh, anything else for Steve? All right. If if not, we'll turn it back to Mr. Kides.
Thank you, Mr. Shoma. Okay. Now, other questions, I will now call for a motion to adjourn. All right. Thank you, Miss Livingston. All in favor? Great. Thank you all. It was nice seeing you, even if it's just virtually.
And thank you.
Thank you. And and ECD members, you have another link uh, for our regularly scheduled meeting at seven P M. Good night, everybody.
All right, we're going to do the same. I need a motion to adjourn our meeting so that we can go into our seven o'clock meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
Uh, thank you, Darius. Darius has moved.
Tammy seconds.
Okay, and Tammy seconds, all those in favor? Just to show. Okay, it's unanimous. We're adjourned and